All right, let's call to order our Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 7th.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
And our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just for all.
All right, our invocation today will be led by Pastor Kathy Simes of the Wells of the United Methodist Church.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for the rain that we have received, for the sound of the birds, and for the blooming of the trees and the budding of the flowers. And also, God, we thank you for these men and women who are leading this county. We thank you that our numbers seem to be holding steady. We pray that that continues. And, God, I ask that you would pour your blessings out upon these men and women as they do their work, remembering always that it is the citizens that they are caring for, those who are seen and unseen. Remembering always that we are here and that they have an important job to do, that they would make just decisions, and that they would always be followed or led by you. So we ask these things in your son's name, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything to add, Correspondents, Derek?
No, sir.
Any public comment, Janet?
We should have one public comment on today. Mr. Hickman?
Mr. Hickman, are you on?
Okay. Dustin says that he's not on.
Okay, not on. Our consent agenda today includes meeting minutes from March 31, study session minutes from April 5, tax change orders in the amount of negative $2,747.80, and to consider participating in the salt bidletting with Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All righty. Your second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our first item of business is consider amending our county zoning regulations as it pertains to towers and Deanne Farrell from Planning and Building, I believe, will fill in, or?
Yeah, Cole, I'm gonna jump in on this one. Certainly happy to get down into the weeds into this with all of you. We did that at the planning commission level. We had an issue here a couple months ago involving cellphone towers and had lawyers on both sides basically arguing over whether it was a requirement that you had to try and co-locate on an existing tower before you built another tower. What we discovered during that process was that our zoning regulations actually were contradictory to state law. And so, obviously, if our regulations don't align with the law, then our regulations aren't valid. And so, all of this in front of you is literally just meant to bring us into compliance with state law. I've had the opportunity to run through every section of this with Larry. I've reviewed it and compared it to the law. It's my belief that we are now perfectly in compliance. But, you know, these, especially these parts of the law involving technology and cellphone towers, they change so fast that you have to do this from time to time. When we put our regulations together, I mean, so much of this technology was in its infancy. And so, this is probably something we'll have to do from time to time. But the crux of it is just ensuring that our regulations are enforceable, given that they're in compliance with the law. So I would take any questions you have, but would certainly recommend that the Board approve these changes.
So which way did it go? Did it go that they do have, they need to, or they don't need to?
No, they don't need to. And what happened in that instance was we had an individual who owned a tower and was trying to insist that any new utilities had to locate on that tower. But that's not what the law says. That's not a requirement, and so...
Do we have a minimum lot size before you can?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So if you have, what is the minimum?
I don't...
So if you have a five-acre lot here, and a five-acre lot here, and a five-acre lot here, and they could all have towers?
Whatever, you can come up, Dee, whatever our minimum setbacks and stuff are, yeah, those would have to be complied with.
The way Larry worded it was that it's only allowed in the ag districts. It's not allowed in the residential districts because he feels if we allow it, like on a 19-acre tract, we would have to allow it on a five-acre tract. And to get the guide wires and all the accessory buildings and still meet your setbacks, plus the fall area required, he didn't feel it would be suitable on residential...
Those 20 acres or more?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right. Well, these have been in front of us since Monday. I've taken a look at them, and, I mean, that's what needs to be done. Our attorneys reviewed them. Any questions for Derek? All right. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the amendments to the county zoning regulations, Section 3-3.01 S.3, and Section 3-3-301 S.4.
I talked to Larry also, because it's as involved when we did all this, and he's just following the guideline the state has laid down to him, and we don't have, you know, we just need to change over, so we follow the state's guideline. I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our next two items of business are continuation from our study session items. We talked extensively about them Monday, but it'd be to consider for approval the adult comprehensive plan grant application for community corrections.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. As you said, Monday, we got a chance to talk about the Adult Comprehensive Plan for Fiscal Year 22, and at this time, we'll stand for any additional questions you might have before considering approval of it.
All righty. Looks like we covered it all Monday. So would anyone care to make a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2022 Kansas Department of Corrections Adult Comprehensive Plan Grant Application?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Go ahead with item three, Dustin.
And moving right on to the Juvenile Comprehensive Plan for Fiscal Year 22. Again, this is something we discussed on Monday, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that one.
All right, this, an affirmative motion for this one would be to approve the Fiscal Year 2022 KDRC Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Make that motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
On to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I don't have a long report today. I did talk with, and this was just a very entry-level preliminary discussion, and I'll let him say more, but I had a discussion with Commissioner Dunn about the Veterans Memorial, and it's my understanding that he gets contacted, you know, on a semi-regular basis about people wanting to add bricks to it. And if you go out there, there's no real logical way, apparently, and feel free to jump in here, Roy, to do that. And he talked to me about whether or not there would be willingness to potentially hire, like, a design architect or someone to add to that memorial in a thoughtful way so that we could sell more bricks and get more people into that memorial. Told him that, you know, we talk all the time about improving the historic courthouse and improving those grounds, and so certainly, anytime I hear something like this, my ears perk up. But also told him that's obviously a discussion and a decision that the five of you would have to make, and not asking you to make it today, but just wanted to introduce the discussion, maybe let Roy speak on it a little bit, and just see if there would be any willingness to potentially do that. So, Roy, do you want to fill in the gaps for me?
Sure. The memorial, it was dedicated in 1999, so it's been over 20 years since it was dedicated. The pathway's now, the bricks are in a design pattern right now, even though you go down there, you see a lot of blank bricks. But these bricks have been walked on for 20 years now, and they're worn down. And I'm, off and on, I get calls about people wanting to add bricks to them. We've had conflicts going on ever since, you know, 21st century started, about 20 years then. There's been a lot of families of veterans that want to have some sort of memorance at our memorial. And originally, they had $20,000 left over from the original build of the memorial, and that $20,000 was used to add one more panel to the memorial, so that was pretty much depleted. And the treasure monitor had fun to help support the maintenance and cost of the memorial from the get-go, and that's been depleted, and it's basically hasn't been supported for quite some time, and it comes up every now and then. And so, between the two of them, between people wanting to, you know, have a chance to get more bricks, plus the maintenance of the memorial itself, I was thinking, and my veterans group was thinking also, that maybe there's a way that we can maintain the memorial as it is now, but add in other sections or walkways or something to have an opportunity for people to have their bricks at the memorial. And one of the things that I was saying about that, to maintain the integrity of the memorial is to have an architect look at it and make recommendations, and present that not only to our veterans service organizations, but also to us as commissioners, since we're pretty much, you know, taking over the responsibility of the memorial, and our maintenance people have been doing a tremendous job maintaining that memorial. And anyway, I was talking to Derek about it, maybe doing some upfront funding to help to have an architect design, present us with several designs for the memorial, that maybe we can increase the number of bricks, we can have people be available, that sort of thing.
Do we know who the original architect was?
I don't, I don't have that information.
Is it, there's still a few people left that passed board, isn't there?
Sherry Wright's one that I know is...
And Harvey, her...
Harvey's passed on.
Passed on, okay, yeah, I think you're probably, Sherry's probably the only one left, maybe all day. I'm just curious, I mean, I don't even remember, I was around when, I don't even remember a doc. I know Dodg Memorial was a big part of it. Of course, he passed on also, so, and I know he had, he used, somebody had a computer layout of how it was supposed, the bricks laid out and everything in the original. Of course, that wouldn't have nothing to do with the expansion, but I didn't, I didn't know if maybe Sherry would know who the original, maybe there's paperwork, you know, original document.
There should be some sort of document somewhere about who's...
I don't, I don't know.
I think Sherry Wright would know who...
You don't think Mr. Lloyd had anything to do with it, do you?
Possible.
I don't know, some of them people back, that, Mr. Lloyd might have an idea, an architect back then who, even if he didn't do it, he probably would have an idea who did do it. And we don't have to go that way, but might be interesting to have the original documents on it. If there was an alternative, maybe when they build it, they build it with alternatives of doing more later on.
I don't know, at the time, they just said they had a cutoff date, once that date was done, then nobody, nobody was able to buy any more bricks after that date.
I'd be in favor of doing it. I know it wasn't a pass, but there were some people that didn't want to do it, so if we just kind of dropped the subject, so, but I, if there's some way we could find to do it and expand it and more people, I'd be fine with it.
See, this whole discussion came up the other day at my veterans meeting when our veterans group, Vietnam Veterans of America, donated to the state memorial, which is out of Junction City, the state Vietnam Veterans Memorial is out of Junction City, and they, it needed a lot of repair, and we donated $1,000 to help that, and I said, well, our memorial here in town, you know, the maintenance fund is depleted, can we help them too? And we're gonna make a donation to help maintain the memorial from our veterans organization. And then the subject came up at that time, that, you know, people want the opportunity to remember their veteran or somebody in the service, but they have no way right now to buy that memor- memor- memory. So that's how the discussion got started in the first place, and I talked to Derek about it, so. I think initially, probably need to find out some history of the memorial itself, and then, once we find that out, I think I would like to see us expand the opportunity myself, and I would like to do it with an architect that has, I think that would be acceptable to all the service organizations that have, and any of the former committee people, whoever they are, that still around, to, would be acceptable to them.
Any idea what a, what's a brick sell for?
That'd be optional. I know the ones out at Ottawa University, they sell theirs for $200 brick, the ones that they sell every year out of OU.
Would they sell the ones down at?
The ones at Legacy Square, I think they were...
They were stair-stairs.
Depends on what sizes they were, but I think it was about, what was it, $160, something like that.
There was, I think there was anywhere from, you know, a couple hundred to 500 to...
Yeah. Of course, down there, you'd want to stay in that, you wouldn't want to do that, you wouldn't want it bigger or smaller, you'd want to stay with the same, everybody the same size.
Did the bricks, they, they had to buy the bricks before on the one at Memorial that's there?
Yes, that's how they funded it.
So, do you remember what they went for approximately?
Oh, boy, I bought one of that 20, 20 years ago.
I wouldn't use that.
I think maybe, it'd be probably cheap compared to what it, I think maybe it's like $100 back then, maybe something like that.
But that's...
20 years ago.
That's how they, I think they spent about five years raising money or something like that, before they even, you know, approached where they wanted it. It was controversial at the time, they put it on the Courthouse Square back then, because some of the people wanted it on, like, private land or somewhere outside, I guess, government land.
I think back, back then, Richard Larkin donated a lot of time doing the brickwork, and I think Kenny Dodd donated a lot of the time doing the axle lettering, so, you know, even Richard, Richard's still around, he might be, have a good idea who originally, you know, was an architect, because he probably had to go by their, their design, he would probably remember.
But I think, I think it's, personally, it's a good site for the memorial. I like how it came out once, once I was able to put it on the county ground there on the corner. Anyway, I talked to Derek about it, and that's kind of where we're at now, if we so choose to look into getting an architect, kind of fund it upfront, and whoever sells the bricks would help pay for the cost of the whole project.
Before we have Commissioner Dunn talk to Sherry and kind of maybe go on a wild goose chase trying to track down the old architect, is there at least enough interest from the five of you to explore the idea?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, yeah, Roy, if you want to do that, and if I can help you in any way, let me know. And what I can do is just, I can research, like, I, I'm sure there are all different types of architects, and there may be certain firms that specialize in something like this. I think it can get tricky when you've had a longstanding existing structure, and then you're trying to add to it, just to make sure that the look stays consistent, and so, but I'll, I can do that on my end, and then you and I can touch base here at some point before we, we come back here for discussion, so.
Probably just be hesitant to anything that would maybe grow or get encroach more into the lawn area, but... My only thought.
We've got a couple of department head openings that are posted. I mean, we've had our Planning Director position posted for a couple of weeks, so we're, we're accepting applications for that. We've recently posted our Health Department Director position. Remain very happy with the county's COVID response. We did not want to post it when we felt like we were right square in the middle of the pandemic, because we feared that we would chase off good candidates, but were, and I'm gonna let Casey and Nick talk in more detail about it, but even our vaccine efforts, we can see that the demand is starting to slow down. So we felt like the timing was right to go ahead and get that posted, so just know that we have two openings that we're recruiting for. And then, you all are aware this exists, but I just, I had a conversation with Sherry and Casey about it. We have a wellness committee, but it's kind of, I think, during the pandemic, that's probably what caused it, but it's kind of went by the wayside. I have asked the two of them to revive it, and would like it to be more robust than ever, and so just know that we, they are in the process of discussing what that's gonna look like. There may very well, you know, be some commissioner involvement to the extent that, that some of you are willing. But certainly, you know, we know that we're constrained financially unless we want to go crazy with taxes, but in terms of wellness, like, I think there are so many things we can potentially do for our people, so just know that behind the scenes, we're working on that. And that's all I have, Cole. Casey, do you want to give a vaccine update?
Good morning, Commissioners. So I have a quick tourism update also that I'm gonna give first. We did send out letters to TGT applicants, events from the past or programs from the past who have applied, or people who have approached me in the last year and a half about the possibility of TGT funds. So that went out a couple of weeks ago, and they have a deadline of April 23. There's a paper application that went to them, as well as information on how they can apply online. And I have received two applications, but we plan to bring a recommendation to the Commissioners at the end of April. I think it's like the 28th, that meeting, so...
We still have funds in that?
I'm sorry?
We still have funds in that, or?
Funds in what?
For TGT funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, that's been budgeted for every year.
Two tiers, this for the whole year, or this is for the first?
So because of this year being still, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we don't really know 100% if events will be able to happen the way they have in the past, or, so that was put into the letter that went to applicants, that this year, funding is contingent on the ability of them to be able to have their event, but next year, we will go back to the two separate, just because this year is an odd year, we are only opening up this one funding period, unless, you know, in the fall, Commissioners, you feel like it's important that we open it back up. I think that's totally a possibility, but we did let them know upfront that there would not be, for sure, a second application period this year.
And this could be a better question for Janet, but do either of you know, I forget, what did we budget for, in terms of how much money did we put in that line to make available?
For TGT, for sponsorship specifically, we put $10,000.
And that is higher than what we've...
Than we've ever done.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that, and obviously, the Board approved the budget, so I'm just bringing it back to your attention, but we were making more of that money available than we have, because we want to push more money out to these events. Like, I, I know historically, some of them, like the car show, have, compared to what, compared to their immense value to the community, they've gotten relatively small TGT contributions, so we're, we're trying to up that amount in our budget and encourage folks to, to make these requests, so...
I think we were also trying to bring everything kind of under the same umbrella, so that you guys didn't have people coming to you throughout the year. We did have some organizations that were coming to you directly to ask for, for funds, and then going out to our Visitors Information Center and asking our tourism folks to donate, so we were trying to bring all of those under one umbrella, so that we get it all at one time of year, and we can say to those folks, this is the process that you need to go through to get the funds, and not coming to you guys directly at various times of the year.
Anything else on that? Okay, vaccines. So we have given a total of 8,535 doses of the vaccine, 5,031 doses, 3,322 doses, and 185 Johnson &amp; Johnson doses. We do have 3,505, we, the Health Department, has actually fully vaccinated 3,505. Now, there's obviously vaccines available from other entities now, and so there's more than that in Franklin County, but we don't have those numbers. This week, as I talked about last week, is a big week. The Health Department's administering 700 total first doses this week, and then on top of that, they had, I think, 400 second doses, four or 500 second doses to give, so they are busy down at the Bottle House. I, we did receive a big shipment for next week, yesterday, sometimes we don't get them until Wednesday, so I don't report on those at these meetings, but we did get 800 first doses for next week. And we're seeing that the Health Department is making a ton of calls off of our list, and getting a lot of, people have already gotten it in other places, which is great, but they're making a lot of calls to only schedule very few people, so it's taking a lot of time. So we are asking people that have previously gotten on our list to reach back out and let us know that they've gotten the vaccine, so we can take them off the list. That saves us, you know, three or four minutes of making another phone call. And I did look this morning at our list, and it's hard to give you an exact number because there's so many names crossed off the list in the middle of it, instead of them all being at one end or the other, but it looks like there's about 500 people, and that's it, on our list still wanting the vaccine, so...
What are we gonna do with it?
So we do have more vaccine, we will, I assume, we're already running into that problem of having more vaccine than people that want it.
Well, and that's just the allotment that's coming to us.
Yes.
That does not account for our partners. I think what we're not, maybe not there yet, but what we're on the cusp of having to do is just tell the state that we don't need as much allocated elsewhere, and that's, I mean, I've been saying for weeks that the moment when our supply outpaces our demand isn't as far away as people think, and I think we're really on the cusp now. We've opened... We've opened it up. I, I don't know, I forget if it was you or Nick that sent an email to all county employees, all city of Ottawa employees, all employees of the other municipalities within the communities, Wellsville, Pomona, everyone, just letting them know, you want to, you want a shot, come down and get it. I mean, we're trying to, to push as many out as we can, but, but Casey hit the nail on the head. We're, we're to a point now where we're having trouble getting enough people scheduled because it's just becoming prevalent enough. Great problem to have. As someone who's helped manage this, this is fantastic for us because it, it's just the first sign that hopefully we'll be able to continue kind of trending into other areas. And I know we're all ready for that, but, but yeah, I mean, we may very well.
First week of April, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think your first thought is maybe do like a mass event or something like that. You get into trouble because if you do drive-through, you got to monitor them for 20 minutes, so that's an issue. And then if you do like a walk-in or you run the, the, the risk of, well, we've had a very organized, very well-run event so far and you come in, you have a time, you waited on. If you do just a free-for-all, then we run the risk of having an event that looks much like what's been on TV and what we've avoided so far, so. Really, there's, are both kind of cautionary things and maybe it's better to just start backing out and let the private side take over since it is available commercially, so.
Are we down to 18, like, the age of 18?
They are taking anybody. They are scheduling anybody they can at this point, yes. Yes, and we have said.
The youngest that they can be to get the shot?
Yes, and so, I'm sorry, we have said in the past 16. 16 is only approved, 16 and 17-year-olds is only approved for Pfizer and we don't get any Pfizer. So in Franklin County, we can only do 18 and up, yeah. The other thing I was going to mention and Nick might want to talk more about this, but the health department is working on a new appointment system called Q-List that they'll use for vaccines so people can just log on instead of getting onto a list now, they can just make themselves an appointment right there. And we're really hoping to have this up and ready next week. But this system will still, will continue to be useful in the health department for other appointments, other vaccines that they do. So it's exciting for the health department. That's really all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. All right, Nick, are you online?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right. Well, Derek and Casey hit the nail on the head as we just showed with vaccines. We were getting over 100 phone calls a day and 100 people put on the list. And right now, we've been doing some evaluating and we're getting less than 40 phone calls a day or 40 people opting in on the online application that we put out. So seen a, a large decrease in that over the last week or so. Just to give you a heads up, Walmart is pushing out quite a few vaccines. Talked to the DC, they have their corporate coming in and vaccinating out there. And the store is getting their doses from corporate. We've offered to give doses, but they're working directly with their corporate group, so they're taking care of that, that area. Friday, we do go out to American Eagle to push out 100 doses. We offered them 200 more doses next week and they stated that they have corporate coming in to vaccinate them the following week as well. So a lot of our larger places, their corporates taking care of getting those pushed out. So what we thought we were going to have a, a large group of people is actually going to be taken care of by the, by their corporate. So we, we don't have them to take care of. Kramer's still pushing out a lot. Auburn Pharmacy up in Wellsville's pushing out a lot. The Health Partnership Clinic just did a thing on Saturday. And then open, I don't know, Audubon Family Physicians pushed out 100 last week. One of the things we've looked at is if we tried to do a drive-through any time this week or this month on a Saturday, what that's going to fall into is trying to get people to do second doses in May on a Saturday. And if we look at the schedule, there's a lot of graduations. So we fear that if we did that, we would not get a lot of second doses pushed out. And that's one of the things we're continuing to see is people calling and canceling their second doses. So that's kind of the concern we're working on now, making sure we can get people in for the second doses and, and getting people fully vaccinated. We, as Casey said, one of the things we, we were doing is when people called in, we put them on a list. Now we're just directly scheduling them. We had the opportunity to look at what a couple other counties are doing with scheduling and there is a program out there that's relatively inexpensive that people can go on, see what times we have available and schedule themselves. It allows us to interact with them. So if we're running ahead of schedule from that system, we can send them a text message and tell them to come in early. It also gives us the opportunity to have a waitlist. So if we have people who are available with, say, on a Monday to get it, they're not on the schedule, they can't put themselves on the waitlist and if somebody doesn't show, we can invite them to come via the, the system. So it will help with our man time on that. It also is flexible enough that we can, if we decide to have the opportunity to do drive-through clinics or if we need to move from the bottle house because our, our doses are down enough and put them in a more of a different area, we can adjust it and, and send them notifications. So it seems like it's going to be a good program. We're hoping to have it up and running pretty soon. The, that's really all I've got on the vaccines right now. We have nine active cases. We're seeing where we were doing multiple, quite a few tests during the day. We're down to maybe three to five tests a day for the COVID. So we're seeing a decrease in it. Audubon Family Physicians is continuing to see a decrease in the number of people that's getting tested for COVID. So if we're not testing, we may not be catching all of it, but we do see quite a, a, a trend downward. So that's what I have on COVID. One thing I will, do want to point out is next week is telecommunicator week. So starting Monday of next week is, I got a proclamation from the governor that signed that next week will be telecommunicators week. We will be doing some things for the dispatchers and getting through, uh, next week, recognizing the hard work that they do. They were deemed first responders and I know we talked about this, but that's one of the things that I want to highlight through telecommunicator week is that dispatchers have now been reclassified as first responders, which is a much needed classification due to them being the first line in any kind of emergency that comes through 911. So very excited about that. And that's really all I have.
All right. Any questions for Nick? We appreciate the update, Nick.
Thank you.
All right. David Lee?
Sorry about that. So since last Wednesday, our crews have wrapped up our initial round of patching the spring, going around to the hard surface roads and getting those patched up. Related to that, Kilo has finished their, their heavy patching work that, that we had scheduled for them. Okay. So Kilo has finished with their patching that they started for us last year and we still had several, several locations that they needed to take care of yet this year. Those have been completed. I haven't, I've been gone here, so I haven't had a chance to go out and take a look at those. But my understanding is that they are done with that. And then here later this month, early next month, they will get started on the overlay, overlay work that they have scheduled. Additionally, our crews have fixed a number of washouts. We had a spot at the intersection of Louisiana and LaBette, had another one on Jackson Road West of Highway 59 and then another on Texas north of Alice Road. So our guys have been busy doing that, those sorts of things. And then we've also had a, another rash of illegal dumping. So we've had crews out on three different days picking up illegally dumped trash, which, you know, this is free dump week. So there are, you know, roll-offs all over, last weekend, all over the city of Ottawa and all the little communities are, in the next two weeks are going to have these roll-offs. And then the last weekend of the, the month will be free dump day for everyone at the landfill. So there's plenty of opportunities for folks to properly dispose of their trash and whatnot. So hopefully they take advantage of that. A few things that we'll be visiting with you about in upcoming either study sessions or agenda, regular agendas. On the 19th, we will have SCS, our, our landfill consultant. They will be here to present their expansion report. Also going to be sharing with you a preliminary site layout for the road and bridge and recycling area to see how we can plan for storage facilities and those sorts of things on that site. And so we'll be visiting with you about that. And then also the 2021 equipment replacement schedule will be kind of running down through that, those lists of equipment, including two motor graders that are due to be replaced this year. So all of those things will be, be brought before you along with a list of potential projects that we may consider moving forward with also. So all of those things will be coming up in the next two, three, four weeks. And that's all I have at this time.
I got one question for you, David.
Yes, sir.
I, well, our Rantoul meeting the other night, this is kind of a iffy deal, but I thought I'd bring it to you. Right there on where Vermont and Rock Creek intersect, headed towards the lane, you know how that dips down pretty good there? You're not complaining about that?
Got the valley gutter to?
But there's a big old chug-o right there in that low spot.
Okay.
And I didn't know if that's something, I told them that was kind of in an iffy area of water drains you there. But we're responsible for the road service, but they're responsible for, but I told them I'd bring it to your attention and be that it is right out in the middle of the road, so.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at it.
I figured you'd want to do something before chip and seal and, other than that, everything's looking.
Yeah, we will definitely make sure these areas are taken care of before.
And other than that, everything's been looking good down there.
Thank you.
Any questions for David? Thank you, David. Janet, anything?
So we had the ballots program for the special election mainly for Dawn. Just to let you know, we've had a discussion with the school district and we think it's best to only open the polling location in Wellsville. So all of the voters for USD 289 that are in other counties will be redirected to Wellsville to vote. So that's about a little over 400 in Miami County, a little over 400 in Douglas County and two voters in Johnson County. Also, the other polling locations other than Wellsville that we would open up in our county have a very small number with the exception of Peoria. And you know the challenges that we've had with the Peoria polling location, having moved it to Ottawa. And that doesn't seem very friendly for the special election, for the Wellsville School District to ask those voters to come to Ottawa. So the superintendent and I decided that it would just be best to have everyone vote in Wellsville. And that isn't going to be an inconvenience to some and we acknowledge that. So we're preparing a letter to go out to all of those voters so that if they, if they are having their polling location moved, they will also get a, an advance ballot form in the mail so they can send that in, so they will have an opportunity. Anyone in Wellsville or Franklin Township would also have the opportunity to get an advance ballot by mail. They're just not getting the form to, to their house because we're not required to send out a notice to them since their polling location's not being moved. So everything's moving forward with that. We're trying to get everything set up, getting ballots ordered and printed. So we'll be ready to get those ballots out the door. Department heads are working on their budgets. We are trying out some of our new systems that we got. Everyone is on Teams now and so we can share workbooks and work in them simultaneously. So we're trying to get those, we have those workbooks out on Teams and trying to get everyone on there to make sure the proper people have access to those so that we can get the budget going and, and hopefully work in a more cohesive way this year so we all can be working in it. We don't need to, you know, call somebody and say, hey, you're in that workbook I need to be in to get some things going. So I'm just trying out some new things that you guys approved with the Office 365. And this was one of those upgrades that came with it. So we're hoping that it works really well this time.
All right, on the commissioners' comments, Dog?
Yeah, I did, I went to Rantoul meeting the other night and I brought up the one subject down there on the road. The other thing is they're working with a lot of easement problems they're having with the properties being divided up like five times with easements and trying to get, trying to get some ideas there, what to do, which direction to go. They're still working with Richmond and Princeton to get their in line with everybody else for the codes court. I did go up to Wellsville last week. Main issues up there was the Wellsville sewer lines and making a bunch of change orders. Chief Blair is retiring from the city of Wellsville and he read his letter of departure. He'll still be, I think, through April maybe, but they've already, not sure the gentleman's name that's already, he was already on the force. It looks like he's going to take over. So there'll be an internal shift. There won't be a big, big changeover with the police department up there. I did finally, now that I'm fully vaccinated, I got, got a tour of the truck stop up there. By the owner invited me to come up and it is doing great. Place is packed. Place is very nice, clean. Have you ever been inside the, the place inside? It's a, a, a lot of different kind of food availabilities. Nice big lounge for the truck drivers and showers. So I, I think it's a really, really made a tremendous addition to Franklin County and that area up there. So I have heard nothing, and I had two ladies this morning, Casey, told me they were very, really pleased with the way Franklin County's implemented the coordination of the vaccines and so forth. They're really happy with the way it's went. So thought I'd tell you that.
Rod?
I have nothing to add, Cole.
All right, I have.
Um, I did jump into the 911 center on Monica Finch's last day and visited with her. On Monday, the city had their study session and they had a pretty long discussion about their land bank. They had the city manager from Junction City on the call where they have over 1,000 lots in their land bank. Because, anyway, because of Fort Riley and some of the decisions that were made. One of the problems with the, with the lots, when you get rid of all the specials, is that if somebody bought a lot in that subdivision before, they're, they're paying specials and somebody else can buy a lot for, and they're selling lots from like $1,000 to $5,000 just because they have so many and they don't have specials, then that, there's an issue with their constituency because some of them are paying specials and some of them are not. They approved their mill and overlay and their chip seal for the year. I wish our bill looked like this, David. I mean, their chip and seal is like a couple thousand, a hundred thousand and their, or the mill and overlay, their chip seal's under 100,000. Wouldn't that be nice? And the, there was a food policy council meeting on Monday. They basically reviewed a lot of the things that they have been working on in the past. Farmers markets start on May 1st. That's exciting. The city of Princeton had their meeting also on Monday. It's spring now that the kids are out on their ATVs, you know, running around without helmets and so there's problems with that. They're talking about rocking some of their alleys. They haven't done that in probably over 20 years. And then Dollar General is coming to Princeton and it's supposed to be there by November is what the, the Dollar General corporate is, is saying, so they're all excited about that. So, they're all excited about that. Yesterday, we had our meeting of the fourth, the Judicial District Nominating Committee, and we had interviews with the three candidates for magistrate judge in Osage County. And with a vote of five out of eight, Jody Brashears, who is actually not a lawyer, but has worked in the Coffey County District Attorney's Office for over 20 years, was chosen to be the new magistrate judge in Osage County. And that's all I have.
Roy?
I don't have anything to say. Just, just mentioned to Don this morning that we got an email from the KC about having the Kansas County Commission Association meeting in liberal Kansas sometime between the June 7th and June 18th. And they sent out a survey to see if anybody was willing to come or didn't want those dates or something like that. They're trying to have a in-person conference out of liberal Kansas. So, anyway, you probably, all of us probably get a, a survey whether we want to go or don't want to go or want something different.
All right. That's good. Well, I don't have anything I need to add either.
I have one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Casey, did you say you was going to have a letter? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, stick around to sign something after the meeting. All right. Anybody else need anything before we sum it up? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.